Voice is mumbled, but the rest of the council you can hear really good. So I'm gonna stay away from the mic a little further tonight and see if that helps. So please, whoever's listening, if they're just pleased to call City Hall, it'll be tomorrow. And let us know if this works better, that would be good. Okay, consent items five A and B.
So.
Oh, done. Any further discussion or question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, motion carried unanimously. We're on to new business. Okay, David Brown, engagement letter municipal advisor regulation, Shane.
Good evening, Mayor, this is the Council. Shane Suny with David Brown Associates, Financial Advisors. In your packet is an engagement letter that we drafted as a result of new regulations that have been essentially approved by the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board and the Securities Exchange Commission. In those new regulations, they talk about the responsibilities that we have as financial advisors have communities, and they go to the extent where they want us to adequately demonstrate, you know, our obligations to the city and make sure you recognize that, you know, we do have pretty significant responsibilities and that you do your best interest. And we want to make sure that you understand that and make sure that if we are monitored by the Securities Exchange Commission, we can also demonstrate that we've informed you of our responsibility to you. So we've drafted this letter that we are submitting to our clients that talk about that responsibility that we have to your community. In that engagement letter, we also have our standard fee schedule, and I mentioned to the council that that fee schedule hasn't changed for probably more than seven years. And so we don't anticipate any changes to fees that we've charged to the community in the past. By authorizing a signature on the engagement letter, you are not obligating yourselves to do anything with our firm. It's simply recognizing that we've informed you of our fiduciary responsibility to the community. So I'm more than happy to answer questions on it. Frankly, it's a form letter from my home office that they're asking me to have all of my clients approve and sign, and so that's my request to you to see me.
Very emotional. Yes. So move. Done. Nine, any further discussion? Anything you want to add, Shane?
Nope.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Yes, welcome. The thirteen D resolution calling for public hearing on establishment of tax increment financing district number one through six.
Mayor members of the council, in your packet is a cover letter and a resolution that starts the process for creating a new economic development tax increment district. The proposed district would cover all of the vacant parcels in the industrial park, and it would be used immediately, more than likely, to promote the construction of a new facility that's approximately 12,800 square feet. That would be used for warehouse and distribution. City staff and the economic development authority have been working with the developer on this project, and he's interested in getting started sooner than later. At this time, it's being proposed that lot three, block two, that's a correction to my letter to you in the packet, is the lot that's to be sold to the developer. We're intending to sell it to the developer for a dollar. If he obligates himself to construct that new facility, we would then use the new property taxes that are generated by that facility to reimburse ourselves for the cost of improvements that we've invested in that lot. We'd be able to capture those new property taxes for a period of up to nine years. And again, we'd use those property taxes to pay those costs that we've invested in that property. We've included other vacant lots in the industrial park because while it's difficult to add property to a tax increment district, it's very easy to later remove it. And so if we later determine that we did not wish to use tax increment financing on any of those vacant lots, simply by resolution, the council can remove those parcels from the TIP district. If we were to come back to you next week and say we have another deal to add to this tax increment district, you would see me again, and we'd be publishing notices and creating a new draft TIP plan and incurring additional expenses to do that. That is the reason why we included the vacant parcels in the TIP district, too. You know, if we have a chance or an opportunity to do some additional projects, we already have the property in the TIP district, and we can simply negotiate a development agreement. So by your action tonight, you're calling a public hearing that would be held at your first meeting in November. At that hearing, you'd be presented a draft of the tax increment plan and a resolution that would provide for the adoption of that tax increment plan. Once you've adopted that tax increment plan, you've essentially created the tool to be able to capture new property taxes for a period of up to nine years on those lots that are included in the tax increment district, so.
How the maximum?
That's the maximum on a industrial, the TIP district like this where it's occurring on vacant land.
Residential is longer.
Residential and redevelopment are both 26 years. Economic development, we're limited to nine elections.
Will we have?
Shane, and if this agreement's approved, is there a time period where for Chad to actually construct this warehouse?
I would expect that in the purchase agreement, we have a deadline for when he has to be substantially completed, and if he's not, then he owes us some money for the lot.
A whole dollar?
No, the whole balance of what we have invested into it, so.
Yeah. Yes, it's in, it's in there. Okay. Now, in these tax increment setups, the taxes that we receive, aren't they, doesn't it go back to the property owner?
Not in this instance.
Not in this instance. There are different forms of the tax.
Well, this one, the city would receive them.
That's why we're selling the property for a dollar.
Okay. To answer your question, yeah, there's a lot, there's three or four different ways, and that's one of them.
Okay. So basically, he's got nine years that are along with him to pay for this lot.
Correct, yes. We're gonna recapture more than our cost of the lot over his nine years.
Oh, that's good.
So it's nine years from right now over all of the lots?
No.
Or as they're developed?
It's nine years from when we correct, collect the first increment, which would be in taxes payable 2016, more than likely. Might be '17, depending on when we get it. So the nine-year clock starts ticking when we capture that first additional increment of property tax that's being paid.
And that question came up to make sure that the first two years wasn't merely a lot valued at like $200, because it takes a year to get, instead of January 2nd of 2015, we don't get the tax until 2016, and that we're not gonna get two years of having anything, it doesn't start till the first payment.
Okay, so if someone else buys another lot in seven months or so, does it start from nine months at that time, that's still also, or right now, it's all?
Nope. It's, yeah, it's when the, when the assessor first adds value to the property that's in the district, that's when we effectively start the clock. So I am expecting that the first year of increment being collected will be 2017, because we probably won't have much activity yet this year that'll register and increase market value. We may delay certification because we don't want to capture a $5 increment. We want to capture the full increment, so.
Might change.
Yep. So we'll see how construction is coming as we time the certification of the district.
What kind of warehouse business is this?
Seed processing, agricultural seed processing.
Know any idea of what he's gonna have for employees out there?
I think he's agreeing to two, two jobs, but yes, that's what he's committing to.
Plus a person.
Yes.
Additional, seasonal personnel.
Okay.
So what we have to do now?
There's a resolution in your packet calling the public hearing, and again.
I'll be calling the public hearing.
So what, this is the reason?
Anything else you want to add?
Nope.
Need further discussion? Anything you want to add, Mike? All in favor, signify by show of hands. Hold, resolution passes five, zero, unanimous. So we'll go on to thirteen C, resolution requesting jobs Z designation being removed from parcels owned by the E. Do you want to give us a little background first, and then chant it or you don't have to do it, Mike?
I can, I drafted the resolution, I'm wanting you to cover it. Uh, we, part of the job Z benefit is an abatement of property tax. We can't have property in both job Z and the tax increment district. We're calling for a public hearing to create a tax increment district over the industrial parcels that are vacant. We need to remove the job Z designation in order to include those in the tax increment district. As job Z program is set to expire in 2015, we don't anticipate any negative results as a result of pulling it out, so. And I believe we'd have the flexibility to redesignate it and take property out of the TIP district very easily if we chose to do that in the next year. Again, it's much easier to remove property from the TIP district than it is to put it in, and so we wish to put it in today to save additional expense associated with trying to put additional parcels in later, so. Again, the resolution is removing the job Z designation from the vacant lots in the industrial park.
Some more, this must be the meeting?
Sorry.
Any jobs, any further discussion? In favor, signify by show of hands. Hold, resolution passes five, zero, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. We look forward to seeing you in November, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thirteen D, resolution request for a variance to decrease the front yard setback from 25 feet to 15 feet in R1 zoning district.
The planning commission held a public hearing September 23rd to consider a request to decrease a front yard setback from 25 feet to 15 feet for a property located at 204 Eighth Avenue North. The request is a result of the property owner being Gerald and Gail Lindbeck and Greg and Terry Lindsauer wanting to move in a 16 by 24 accessory structure and utilize an existing footing that's at the property. The planning commission reviewed the request and is recommending denial of the request to reduce the front yard setback before you can make a resolution for your consideration with their fact, with their funding.
Any questions, room?
Do you want to move in another structure?
That's correct.
Is it gonna be attached to that corner, that house?
No, it wouldn't be attached at all, actually. It would just be a freestanding 16 by 24 existing structure.
As what?
An accessory structure like a garage.
Greg, if you want, I'm pretty sure if you got some questions as well.
Yeah, what you, you wanna put on there is a garage?
Correct.
Okay. How long is that existing footing been empty or hasn't been used?
Greg said he doesn't know for sure, many, many years. I think he even suggested it could have been a barn at some point.
What I had pulled it was a barn type deal.
Right.
And that would be on which side of the property?
The west.
The west side.
The west side?
It's actually the side street.
So that's not the front yard?
Correct.
The front yard is the north side of the house?
Correct.
Actually, the corner lots, because they're bonded by streets, each street side is considered a front yard for setback purposes.
How far back is that existing garage, it's there or no?
It's over 25 feet. We figured about 28 and something like that.
It's 28, and so even if I wanted to go within tolerancees, I could bring it ahead of my old, my other garage right now, three feet, so nothing would even be in line after 25 feet.
But the existing foundation there is 15 feet away from the ballpark?
Yes. Actually, I would move it back seven feet. I would use part of the existing foundation and add seven feet to it.
The existing foundation is actually closer than.
15 feet.
Closer than.
Would you have a concrete driveway there, though?
Maybe eventually, for sure it'll be rock.
If I may, the fact that there's a foundation there is irrelevant, because once the structure was removed, it lost its grandfather rights. Once the structure's changed at all, it loses its grandfather privileges and rights. And those are wrong words, because building zone rights, you can't think of that word.
Well, this wouldn't be any different, like anybody else, then, if there was no fa, old foundation, or anyone could have grabbed it.
Right.
In the property.
Two yards of, apparently described as front yard being.
Go ahead. I spent some time in this.
Was there a three, is there a three-car, that three-car garage, it's on there now?
Like two and a quarter, and a half.
How many apartments are gonna be in that house?
None.
This single family.
Single family.
Used to be duplex.
It could give me, it could easily convert it back into a duplex if I wanted to.
Like 10, 10 years?
It was still duplex when it bought it.
Okay, okay. What year was that?
Two and a half years ago.
So, 2011, or so. Any other questions? The council, what's?
I move the, what was the planning commission's recommendation?
Don, your second.
Second.
Follow me, further discussion? All in favor, signify by, excuse me, this is the resolution.
Yes.
All in favor, signify by show of hands. Hold, resolution passes four, one. Thank you. Thirteen D, joint power agreement with Southwest Minnesota and Northwest Iowa Emergency Response Unit.
In your packets, you'll have a copy of the joint powers agreement. The Emergency Response Unit, we've been a member since 2003. As it came about with the board, looked at advising the joint powers agreement, because it's been so long. You'll see on the letter from Mr. Sunday that I had him review the joint powers agreement. The Emergency Response Team is set up of 22 law enforcement agencies, 13 from Minnesota, nine from Iowa, that we share high-risk entries, arrests, searches, or if extra manpower's needed at any time. It's something that's, we've only had to use once out of all this time, but it was, worked very well, where we've done training, they put on training for our officers, too. I would just ask that the council, go on Mr. Sunday's recommendation and approve it that we continue to be a member of the Emergency Response Unit and allow it to be part of the joint powers agreement.
Mark, how does this, how is this organization, part of these communities put together? I mean, how do they go out and make their membership?
What it is, it's open to any law enforcement agency in Southwest, Southern Minnesota, Northern Iowa, for a cost, what they have is a membership cost is just under $2,000 for us by population. And what that allows us to do is we can call them out as many times as we can. If we choose not to be a member, and we need a situation where we need an Emergency Response Unit to come, they will come for us, and they will do the work for us, but the charge will be extremely high, anywhere from five to 10,000 dollars would be billed to the city just for using their unit. So it's actually a decision by each community. Right now, they're going on a population size for what fees are, and they're looking at increasing, but the increase has been very minimal and has worked out well. How long would this agreement we go for? Well, the agreement would be good for, the last one that we had was since 2003, so 11 years, and I have worked, I actually, I missed one meeting, and I got selected board chairman, so I'll never miss a meeting again, but the fact is, is we'll be looking at it every couple of years just to make sure that everything is up to date and.
Is that $2,000, is that $2,000 a year then?
Yes, yep, and we've been paying that for the last 11 years.
It wants to be entered as a payment, is that fee gonna go up, you know, and so they're looking at raising the fees, pull that, or is that locked?
Right now, it's set up what the board is at. We can, we can get out at any time, that's no problem. But right now, the way it's set up is there's gonna be, what has been approved by the board is a 10% pay increase for 2015, which has been budgeted for 2015. And they're looking to keep the cost down as much as possible for smaller, for smaller departments. What really comes into play is the cost for new equipment. This all-crew vessel alone for the entry team is $2,500 a piece. And they have roughly 15 to 20 members that are on, the actual units come all over that respond to it.
So they, so this response unit has its own equipment and?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's specifically what that, all the dollars for our share would go for, is it goes into that pot?
Correct.
Okay.
Fees for gas, to cover further emergency vehicles, things of that nature, that's really need that more training lines, the money goes towards any equipment.
All offices can use.
Some departments, Fairmont, I bet you calls them out 20 times a year. We have called them out, I said the one time, and we've done it all these years, and it was, worked out just, it was well worth it. It's an insurance policy. When I first came to the board and brought this up when we first got into this, I made it real clear, it's a cheap insurance policy. And when you have something that goes down, and you can have 15 to 20 officers here within an hour's time, that can take over, and they're trained, and they're well, it just, it's like a, it's like a SWAT, SWAT team's the easiest way to, to work it. That's exactly what that is. Our team, the team that we're involved with actually assisted in, has assisted with the Blue River County, the Manhattan Emergency Response Unit. They were down in Amway, they've been down in a number of situations that they get called back, because they've worked hard on their training and they're good at it.
Motion.
Done.
Second.
Josh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Thirteen, yeah, change the council in November to November 3rd at 7:00 PM, and set canvassing for Friday, November 7th at 12 noon.
Typically, the city council is meant the day after the election, council meeting, and not just the canvassing of the election at the same time. State statute's been changed, there has to be a three-day waiting period now between the time of the election before the canvassing should be held. Also to facilitate public hearings, and we've got going, we're recommending that we meet on Monday, November 3rd, here at 7 o'clock, and then canvass the results on Friday, 7th at noon at City Hall.
The entire council meeting at noon?
Yes.
Really emotional?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, motion carried, we agree with that. Thirteen G, resolution authorizing execution of agreement, Bill.
In your handout tonight, there was a resolution where the city enters into a pipeline crossing agreement with the U.P. for installing an encasement of a 15.3-inch water main at milepost 1 to 1.53, which is located by Tom's tire.
Warehouse.
Warehouse on County 55. That's part of the project that will take place next year when the county state aid code passed the vet clinic on Sixth Avenue, it's resurfaced in concrete.
This would be in resolution form?
The most, the third, the third.
Hold.
Second.
Josh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by show of hands. Hold, resolution passes five, zero, unanimous. Adam?
Couple weeks ago, me and Joe and Josh went to a meeting on Missouri River, and they indicated that instead of their 2 mil increase for the next three years, they're gonna hit us with a 5 mil increase this year, zero next year, and one or two the following year. Today, at noon, we're not with the budget committee and discussed it, and as of right now, we're not gonna do a rate increase.
5 mils is?
5 mil is a half a cent, correct.
I was not about to say crystal.
Yeah, 21%.
Oh, it's not that.
We purchase, and I'll probably catch that for saying this publicly, but we, excuse me, we sell electricity for less than Hartland sells, for less than Lake Crystal pays to purchase it.
Correct.
At that rate. And we're seeing a 14 to 21% increase, I think we put two increases on, and then rescinding one, they got probably utilities commission, I think, and Lake Crystal.
Yes.
That's the very difference, but it is what it is. Anyhow, so this comes out to about a $44,000 a year increase, estimated increase for?
Estimated increase. It all depends on how much we buy, because a bulk of our color comes from WAPA, which is much cheaper.
Is it about 50, 50, Adam?
No.
Okay, what's the, for Western Energy is how many percent?
Depending upon the month, it's upward to 70.
Average for the 12 months?
Probably 60, 60.
60, okay, great. And the rest of Missouri River Energy Services.
Yep.
And our contract with Missouri River, I think we filed into the 2030.
Wow, 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 it's 20, 50.
50. Okay, so the $44,000 will not be passed on, but the committee voted unanimously to not increase that, so we're gonna eat that, and have approval in the electric department as we continue to have. If you're okay.
Right.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yep.
Okay, done.
Linda, question.
Yeah.
When an individual, a handicapped individual, comes to the movie, buys a ticket, goes up the ramp to get into a theater, how do we get them in?
Well, I'd be, people from downstairs.
Downstairs goes up there? Okay. And that could cause, you know, I mean, I've been to movies down here where they're lined up, they get in, and the poor ticket taker doing what she can. Usually have two people.
We usually still send someone up.
Where's Ben, how much we spend with ramp?
245.
Okay. Seems to me that if we're to spend that type of money.
Uh-uh. I know where you're going.
What?
I don't want that.
A monitor, a button, you don't want that? Okay.
I wanna say over who goes in that door.
What, yeah. I understand, they come and buy a ticket.
I know.
Yeah, but how many, how many kids are waiting to go with that particular person in a situation, you got 10 people going in.
People take off real fast.
I try and bring up something good, and everybody all, just looks at it like it's.
We thought, we talked about it, we discussed it.
Well, I guess when you're standing, somebody's, and I don't know, I don't know how many times we have, we've done that, but when we're down there at a good movie, you're standing 10 deep to buy a ticket, 5 deep trying to get some concession, well.
Finish your presentation.
That's fine.
Finish your.
I'm thinking there should be some kind of a buzzer, monitor system, we're spending $240,000, and we have to take an employee to go up there and let somebody in the back door, and you know what, so what if two kids sneak in or three kids sneak in? I mean, it just seems to be a lot easier for our employees, and just an easy way of getting people in there. I mean, I don't know how often it happens, but.
So you'd like us to look into that?
Well, I mean, it makes sense, we're spending $240,000 on ramp for handicapped accessible, and then we gotta walk up there and let them in.
Look at everybody. We're getting a non-biased opinion. What do you think, Blakey?
Um, cool.
Okay. Okay, so we'll at least, we'll at least look into it.
That's fine.
Okay. Anything else, Don? Thank you.
Just an update on the ramp, as you can see, we've already started the project. On October 14th, the ramp is coming down. Street Department anticipates that it'll take the rest of that week to completely remove it. We've already received some pictures from the firm in Manjato that by the end of this week, the ramp parts are going to be sent off, be galvanized, so it is progressing. And we anticipate that everything will be backed up by the fourteenth of November.
Will the theater be shut down during that time?
It has to be, because we do not have two exits. The other thing is, next Monday is a holiday, the compost site will be open. We'll have those hard-time individuals working on a holiday.
What is your one of the?
Well, I'm listening. Yes.
So will they open Monday or Thursday or something?
Correct.
Holiday. You have anything?
No.
You ready? You got something?
No, I think, I think he just kind of wanted to listen and hear about the ramp, and I think he addressed that, so thank you.
Anything else you want to add? No. The word's not even taken, the Dairy Queen is closed, but. So you go to McDonald's right stream, or what?
Sure. I don't care.
There's none. Mark? Andy? Nope. Linda?
The movie this weekend will be Box Trolls, it's rated PG, it's an hour and a half long. We'll have a matinee on Saturday, the eleventh, at ten a.m. And you've already said this, but this is the last weekend that the ramp will be open, or the theater will be open until, we'll probably open at the weekend of November twentieth. That's the five, I don't know if you're dated, but we're rebuilding the ramp and redecorating the theater.
Inside?
Inside.
No, we're doing outside.
Second floor, excuse me.
We're trying to decorate the outside.
Okay. Molly? Okay, with the motion to adjourn?
All move.
Make sure we're pretending to have a good night.